Tuesday, January 6, 2015, Manistee City Council Meeting to Order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michelle, can you please take the roll?
Mayor Kenny?
Here.
Councilmember Cody?
Here.
Councilmember Zelinski?
Here.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Woodliffe?
Here.
Councilmember Gustad?
Here.
City Manager?
Here.
City Attorney?
Here.
DPW Director?
Here.
Finance Director?
Here.
Public Safety Director?
Here.
City Engineer?
Here.
Thank you. Public hearings we have none, citizen comments on agenda-related items. So anyone who would like to comment on tonight's agenda, please raise your hand. Yes, please come forward, state your name and address.
Bob Marcol, 432 Cedar Street, City of Manistee. Back in October, the council took a vote to cull the deer that passed. Now, a couple of the council members want to rescind this motion that we made back in October. They claim there is no study on it. Well, we did study it about two years ago. We had the DNR game biologist come in here and do a presentation to the council. I don't know how many studies you could have, but we did do an in-depth study. Police Department did do a study on it. In the last five years, we've had approximately 65 car accidents in the city. Just last week, we had two more hit on 31 just north of Monroe Street. So, I'm urging the council to move ahead with this deer. So, we're just going to have more deer, more does, more fawns this spring. So, I'm urging the council to take action on it and let's get this through it so we can at least knock our deer herd out to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, please come and state your name and address, please.
I'm Brad Laxley. I reside at 444 Sixth Street here in Manistee. All I can really tell you is in our particular area in the block, we've had a number of deer over the years, but this year, it seems that that number has diminished. I recently got a dog, and I'm walking the dog every day, a lot of times down by the golf course and beach. Well, I do see, you know, some deer down on the beach. And driving out north or to be south of the high school area, I see some deer. But, in my opinion, it's nowhere near the amount that I've seen in the last several years.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, sir.
Ayn.
You.
First time I ever dealt with these things.
Can you state your name and address, please?
My name's Christopher Masala. I'm above 1004 Manistee Streets.
Thank you.
Right by the water and stuff. I ain't worried about the deer. I just have issues with the snow removal in my area. Especially around my streets. We may get lucky like last year, get once or twice a snow truck coming down there. Meanwhile, I'm getting stuck, have to push a big old flatbed truck across the street to get where I need to go. And I'm sorry, I got back issues and stuff. It's getting kind of old. I know it's in town. It's pretty real nice, beautiful streets. Everything getting a sidewalk, a new wall. All that comes up, why is it where I'm at, we basically forget about? You know, today I went home, yes, it was plowed. But, next time when it happens, how long it's going to, you know, how long it's going to take? I don't know if you guys got any right of luck down there or what, who does. The street is really crappy, period. With the snow on top of it. It's ridiculous. I just want to know what can we do to help the situation? Because I got a 10-year-old, plus my wife had brain surgery on top of it. And with a, you know, I've got to switch sides every day for parking. Trying to walk across the darn street. I worry about her falling because she had brain surgery. And won't ruin what they fix because of it. You know, and other people around my neighbors, you know, who are old too. So, is there a way we can get this somehow figured out before it gets really bad that somebody end up falling down there and actually get seriously hurt? Or a car gets buried? And I don't know how I'll ask this question. I'm actually begging.
Can you tell me the address again, please, sir?
I'm on 1004 Manistee Streets. We're right by Owens. Factory and Tara, I believe, is the outlet right there. They're like my neighbors. I mean, it's been plowed today, but the problem is it was just none half. I mean, we got a snow paper deposit left on one street because what they do is just go down the side of streets and don't even come by my house. And they go fall off that pavement.
Call number, sir?
Sure. My phone number is 586-563-7848. And like I said, I see you guys using the sidewalk plows down over on these nice towns over here. But, are we?
Yeah, we'll look into it and...
My question is, is a snow sidewalk thing, is it deer poles come down our streets? Like on our sidewalks or not?
The intent of the sidewalk plow is to, is what we do is we hit the major roads where the schools are going. So, that is where we're going to focus our energy is ensuring that the sidewalks next to the schools will get the vast majority of that, as time allows, the sidewalk plow will venture out into the city. There's one plow, so if you're down there, you probably won't see it multiple, multiple, multiple times.
I never saw it. Last year, zero.
Okay, well, let us take a chance and let us talk to you about that.
I will appreciate it so much.
Thank you very much, sir.
So, anyone else like to comment on the agenda?
Okay, one more.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's John Brock, 536 Eighth Street. It's on the corner of Eighth and Tamarack, which is the intersection that goes down to high school on Eighth Street. I would like to concur with Mr. Marcol that something needs to be done about the deer. I counted as many as 23 at one time in my yard on Eighth and Tamarack. They eat everything inside. They don't care if I'm there. I mean, they're sufficiently domesticated that if I go out my back door with the intention of scaring them out of my yard, they look at me like, "What? Go back in the house." There's just too many of them. Something has to be done. They're eating everything inside. The cedars that used to divide my backyard from my neighbor's backyard are now bare, six feet, seven feet off the ground, as far as the deer can reach standing on their hind legs. And it's the same thing across the street. My neighbor across the street had cedars that blocked his side yard from Eighth Street and from Tamarack. They're bare, six or seven feet up in the air. Something has to be done. And it's not a matter of determining which deer are the problems through some sort of study. The deer are the problem.
Does anyone else like to comment on tonight's agenda? See, now we'll move on to the consent agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the irregular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval minutes, approval payroll, cash balances report, notification regarding next work session. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I have a motion and we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Have a motion by Councilmember Cody, supported by Councilmember Goodspeed, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? See, now can you please take the roll?
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Councilmember Zelinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodliffe?
Yes.
Councilmember Gustad?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Unfinished business we have none, new business. Presentation by the City Bond Council, Patrick McGowan, regarding City Bonding Authority and Bond Authorizing Resolution.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Pat McGowan. I'm an attorney and I've worked with the city for a number of years on bond and finance issues. I don't do what the city attorney does. I really specialize in the area of municipal finance. And I know the city has a revenue bond project that is contemplated to be coming up here relatively soon. We thought it might be helpful to just kind of go over some basics related to bonds, some of the things that the city has done in the past, as well as the future, to kind of put that in the context and maybe answer some questions about the upcoming bond and also some other bond issues the city had done as well. So, in talking with Mitch and Ed, I put together a little PowerPoint here just kind of talking about the basics of municipal finance. I apologize, this may be basic for some of you. I'm going to try to move through it pretty quickly and then deal with any questions you have. And if you have questions during this, please feel free to interrupt me because I'd be happy to address those as they come up. So, the first thing that I often get asked by municipalities, especially folks, business owners, you know, can't we just go to the bank and borrow money? Why do we have to issue municipal bonds? And first of all, the answer is, no, you can't just go to the money and borrow a bank with a typical loan like you would for your own business or personal use. And the reason for that is rooted in some principles of municipal law. This is the last of the lawyerly things I'll do here. But, there's a principle of municipal law, it's called Dillon's Rule, which is essentially that a municipality like the city can only do those things which the state has granted you the authority to do, or which you're essential to do those things. This is a little bit the opposite of the way the law is for maybe a private corporation. And oftentimes, people ask their lawyer and say, "Can I do this?" And the lawyer says, "No," and you say, "Where does it say I can't?" Well, in municipal law, it's a little bit different. When the lawyer says, "No," you say, "Where does it say I can't?" The answer is, it doesn't say you can't, but there's nowhere that says you can't. So, in order to do something as a city, you have to find statutory authorization or some authorization in law for you to do that action. And when it comes to municipal finance, that's an area that is very highly regulated by state law. There is a General Municipal Finance Act that was revised in 2001, which basically says municipality like the city can only issue debt in accordance with that act. And that covers a broad range of debt instruments. The other thing to keep in mind is the right to do something, to pay for something, to build something, to construct something, doesn't necessarily mean you have the inherent right to borrow money to do that. So, whenever you talk about borrowing money to build a project, we have to look to certain state laws to see where that authorization is and then follow the rules that that state law has for that particular type of bond issue. And we'll talk a little bit about those different types of bond issues. So, basically, cities borrow money really in two different ways. Issuing municipal bonds, which you have done. And second, issuing what we call installment purchase agreements. These are things, they're called different things. You've done most recently, it's commonly used to buy equipment. The city also did this a few years ago for the improvements at the Ramsdale Theater. And that really looks a lot like a commercial bank loan, except it's documented a little differently. So, even though I said, "No, you can't just go to the bank to borrow money," local banks or banks can buy your bonds and they can enter into these installment purchase agreements. The difference between that and a commercial loan is that agreement with that bond has to follow the rules under state law for issuing and incurring that debt. So, you can't just go sign a commercial loan or note, but you can go and enter into one of these other types of agreements or issue bonds and then have the bank buy it. The other question that we get asked a lot is whether or not we have to have an election in order to borrow money. And a lot of people are familiar with school districts. It seems every time a school district wants to borrow money, they have to have an election. And that's pretty much because of the way school law is set up. But for municipalities like cities, most bond issues by cities and other governmental units are actually not approved by the voters. There are a number of statutes which authorize the issuance of bonds and debt that do not require a vote of the people through approval of a bond issue. Many of those, though, do have a process by which the voters can submit petitions to trigger a referendum election on the bonds. And we'll talk a little bit about that because that's the more common way that bonds are issued by cities. And that process is used in a couple of different types of bond statutes, including revenue bonds that we'll be talking about in the next couple of weeks. So, the question people often have is, what is a bond? You know, it sounds complicated, more complicated than a note. I mean, but essentially, all a bond is is a written promise to pay. You know, I've got a copy of one of one that we did, you know, 50 years ago. And you think about, you know, big public works projects, nothing's bigger than the Mackinac Bridge, at least in this state in terms of scope and majesty. And that's really an example of what that bond looked like 50 years ago. And it really hasn't changed that much. You know, essentially, a bond is a written promise to pay. They repay it anywhere from one to 40 years. And the special aspect about municipal bonds is that if it's for a public project, it's tax exempt to the holders. What that means is that you, as the issuer, the borrower, pay a lower interest rate than a private sector entity with the same credit. So, municipal bonds essentially give you a lower borrowing rate than it would a private sector entity. There's really two different major categories of bonds. And the city has utilized both of these for various projects over the years. General obligation bonds are those that are backed by the full faith and credit of the city. There's two different kinds there, limited tax and unlimited tax. And I'll talk about those in a minute. But the thing about those types of bonds is you can actually use a variety of sources to repay that money. So, for example, the cities issue capital improvement bonds that may be paid from water and sewer monies. It may be paid from special assessments. It may be paid from tax improvement revenues to DEA. Or it may be paid from general fund monies. There's a difference between the source of repayment, what that money is that you guys use to pay that debt, versus what the security is to the bondholder. And that's really what the distinction is between these various types of bonds. And we'll talk about that in a moment. The other major category of bonds are revenue bonds. These are bonds that are not backed by the city's full faith and credit, but there's a specific source of payment, a specific revenue source. And it's usually rates and charges like water and sewer systems. But it can also include other types of revenue systems. Parking systems, recreation systems, which are a little less common. But water and sewer, electricity, those sorts of major utilities are the most commonly used funds that revenue bonds are issued under and to pay for. Again, they're generally not approved by the voters, although there's a referendum rate. And they're not considered to be a debt of the municipality because of the nature of the bond. We'll talk about that a little bit later when we talk about debt limits. One thing about revenue bonds that are a little different than general obligation bonds is because they're not backed by the city's full faith and credit and because they're really payable from a specific source, they're really treated from a rating standpoint differently than your general obligation bonds. And there's usually a requirement for those revenue bonds that are sold to the public for you to borrow a little bit extra and set it aside in a reserve fund, kind of like a rainy day fund, in case the revenue's net year come up a little short. So, when we talk about revenue bonds, we'll often talk about having a reserve fund that we may borrow a little extra for the fund, or maybe it's funded from other cash. But essentially, that's there again to help improve the credit quality of that bond and also provide a little additional protection to the city and the bondholders in case the revenue system net year has particularly bad year. Okay, this is a list of various types of municipal bonds. The most commonly ones are done by cities. I'm not going to go through them one by one, but I just wanted you to have this list. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about the ones that you issued in the past and the most commonly used types of bonds for cities like yourself. So, hopefully, you're not feeling like this guy right now as we're thinking about money and debt and all these issues. The voted unlimited tax general obligation bond is what a lot of people think of when they think of school bonds or bonds where you go to the ballot box and you're asked as voters to approve a bond issue. There's various statutes that authorize these for cities. It's an old 1923 statute. And the main feature of this is that it has to be approved by the voters. And the benefit of this from the city's standpoint is if the voters approve this bond under our Headley Amendment, that then gives the city the ability to levy a special tax over and above your existing taxes you're allowed to levy under the charter in order to pay that debt service. Now, the last time the city of Manistee did one of these was back in the 90s when the city borrowed money for an aerial fire truck. The city voters were asked to approve a bond issue. It was several hundred thousand dollars. The bonds were issued and that allowed the city to levy a special tax that debt millage had appeared on the tax bill that was over and above the amount you needed in order, it was over and above your charter limit and it was in an amount necessary to pay that debt service. A lot of cities will sometimes use these to pay for roads. It's sometimes been used for city halls, libraries, fire stations, or other public buildings. And again, that's often the way that school districts borrow money for buildings and improvements because they don't have quite the same ability to issue limited tax bonds like cities do, which we're going to talk about next. The other main type of bond, and this is the one that the city has used most frequently, is something we call a capital improvement bond. There were various statutes that allowed for limited tax bonds in the past, but in 2001, when the municipal finance laws were revised, this provision was put in. And it essentially allows the city to borrow money for any capital improvement. This is how the city financed the improvements to this building. It's how you've also done some road projects. Most recently, in 2010, when the city did a number of water and sewer projects as part of the CSO, you also issued capital improvement bonds to pay for some of the road costs that weren't qualified to be issued any of the other bonds. So, it's really kind of a catch-all statute that allows the city to issue bonds for a variety of debt improvements. This is considered a limited tax bond. And again, the distinction is that although you're pledging the general fund in the city's full faith and credit, the city is not allowed to levy taxes above your maximum rate allowed by the charter. And so, as a result, to bondholders, this isn't considered to be as great a credit instrument as those unlimited tax bonds are, which allow you to levy a tax above the charter limit. Now, for most cities, the difference in their credit rating between the limited tax bonds and the unlimited tax may be nonexistent or very small. But there is a difference from the investor's standpoint. But this is probably the most commonly used municipal bond statute over the last 15 years. And again, it pledges the city's full faith and credit, but as you have done, you can use a variety of other municipal funds and sources in order to pay that debt service. So, generally, all the capital improvement bonds have the same credit quality because you're essentially pledging the city of Manistee's good faith and credit behind those bonds. And essentially, when they're issued, they're saying you're going to use whatever available funds you have that are legally allowed to be used to pay that debt service. Now, there is a debt limit for that particular type of bond, which, capital improvement bonds only, which is the amount can't exceed 5% of the city's SEB. And you are not within those limits on the capital improvement bonds that you are going to pay. Revenue bonds is the other major category. And this is what you have used more than any other type of bond issue because this is essentially how most cities pay to finance their water and sewer projects. The thing about revenue bonds are is they're essentially, instead of pledging the city's full faith and credit and putting the general fund behind it, it essentially pledges the money from the users of that system. And that is what secures the repayment of the bond. So, the idea is that if you're going to build water and sewer lines or make improvements to the treatment plants, it's the users of that system who use the water and sewer that are paying for it. And again, other cities that have electric and gas utilities or even cable television systems will often use revenue bonds to do so. They are not considered to be a debt of the municipality. And the reason for that is that they're pledging the revenues of the enterprise fund, not the city's full faith and credit. So, there's a lot of old case law that says this is not a debt of the city for debt limit purposes in the same way that that voted unlimited tax bond would be or the limited tax capital improvement bond would be. Because if you come up short on the debt service, the remedy for bondholders is not to go ask the city to get the money out of the general fund. The remedy for bondholders is to say to the city, "You need to raise your water and sewer rates in order to cover the debt service according to the covenants in the bond. And until you do, that's what that reserve fund is there for, that's tucked aside in order to cover the shortfall." So, that's why revenue bonds are not considered to be debt of the city for debt limit purposes. And there are exceptions for that in state law, which we'll talk about in a little bit. Now, because of that, there are generally covenants in those bond documents that the bondholders want to know, "Okay, city, you know, it's not good enough if you set your rates breakeven in order to pay for your operation costs and your debt service." Because if you have a bad year, you know, it's a wet summer and people don't use the water as much, you know, you may come up short. And so, revenue bonds generally have covenants in them that provide additional protections to the bondholders. One is what we call the rate covenant. And that essentially says, "City, you're agreeing that you're going to set your rates each year in an amount necessary to pay not only your operation and maintenance costs, but to cover your debt service on the bonds that are secured by the revenues of the system." And in your case, your rate covenant is 125%. So, the city has in the past, going back now 15 or more years, said with all those revenue bonds for our senior lien bonds, we promise it will charge at least 125% of what we need to cover the debt service on those revenue bonds. The other thing that bondholders have as protection with revenue bonds is again, that bond reserve account that gives them a protection if you do have a bad year. That's sitting there in cash invested by the city, which the city keeps the interest in. It's used in case you come up short. Now, when the city started the process for their current water and sewer project, which was back a couple of months ago, I mentioned earlier, the first step in the process is a notice of intent. So, the city council adopted a notice of intent resolution that said, "Voters, we intend to issue revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed $3.5 million to pay for these various water and sewer projects." And the city published a notice in the newspaper that said, "We'll issue the bonds in an amount not to exceed $3.5 million. However, we can't issue the bonds if a referendum petition is submitted by 10% of the registered voters within 45 days." So, that took place back a couple of months ago. The referendum period expired. And so, the city now has the legal ability to take the next steps to issue the revenue bonds. And that's something that is scheduled to take place over the next couple of months. So, the next step would be the adoption of a bond authorizing ordinance. Sometimes it's called a bond authorizing resolution for most bond issues, but revenue bonds, it's called an ordinance. But essentially, that's a document that sets forth the covenants, the terms under which those bonds will be issued. Now, as of right now, the city, working with the Public Works Department, city staff, have not yet finalized yet the size that that bond issue is going to be. The notice of intent, it was approved, said not to exceed $3.5 million. And what that was based on was what the estimates were back then, plus the healthy contingency, plus an amount to cover, issuance costs, if we had to make a deposit to the bond reserve, and if the city wanted to borrow some money to cover some of the interest costs in the short term until the project is built. And then after that, people like me, the bond lawyer and the financial advisor say, "Now add a little more just to bump it up, to give the city an extra cushion in case something happens that the engineer estimates are off." You know, there've been a lot of construction projects over the last year coming in higher. Sometimes it's lower. And so, generally, the amount that's in that notice of intent is a bigger number than what you actually end up borrowing. So, some of you may wonder, why did we say not to exceed $3.5 million if the number we're talking about, the project cost, is somewhere in the $2 million range? And the answer is, that flexibility was put in to give you an extra cushion and flexibility in case costs went up over time. Because ultimately, you, the city council, will decide in that bond ordinance what the amount is that you're going to authorize to be issued. So, you always have a second chance after that notice of intent to reduce the amount. But if things happen that cause the amount to go over it, you wouldn't be able to increase the amount over that $3.5 million without going through that process again. The one other question on the sizing is what all is going to be included in that? And again, to get the better cost estimates, that information should be available in the next few weeks. And there'll be more information on that when the bond ordinance is actually presented to you. And there's still the ability for the city officers to reduce the amount from the amount authorized in that ordinance between the actual authorization and the time of sale to match up with what is expected to be actually needed. to match up with what is expected to be actually needed. I already talked about installment purchase contracts, but again, you've done this for equipment purchases, sometimes cities use this to buy land, like a land contract, and you also use this for the Ramsdale Theater improvements, which allow for a placement. It's ideal for small dollar amounts or short-term debt, because there's a maximum limit of 15 years, and if you do it for seven years or less, it's really attractive to banks. So we can use this and place it directly with the bank, and it's a nice vehicle that avoids a lot of the other municipal bonding statute processes to allow you to get financing for short-term and smaller-sized projects. The one other thing I'll mention, because the city has these outstanding downtown development authorities are allowed to ask the city to issue bonds, so the city issues bonds in its name, but is allowed to pledge the tax increment revenues to the DEA. And so that was done a number of years ago, and those bonds were refinanced a couple of years ago to take advantage of lower interest rates and savings. But those show up as bonds issued by the city, even though they're actually paid for by the DEA. One of the major limitations on bonds are debt limits, and there's a general limit for home rural cities, charter townships, and villages that says your debt, as defined in state law, cannot exceed 10% of your SEV after adding back in an equivalent value for tax abatements and some other things. And where this is contained is in the Home Rural Cities Act. Section 4A has that limitation, and then it also has a list of exceptions from the debt limit. And there's an important provision at the beginning of that section that says, notwithstanding the charter provision to the contrary, here are the exemptions from that limitation. So the state law has the limits that apply, and the reason for that is, they get changed all the time. Over the years, additional exceptions have been added based upon the needs of the state. And so that is in there, that language is in there to say, every city has a charter that has provisions in it that were authorized at the time that charter was approved by the voters. But if you think about the way law works in the state of Michigan, there's a hierarchy as to the law that applies. So at the very top, we have the Constitution of the state of Michigan, that governs all, and nothing below that can contradict what the Constitution allows. So if we go and amend the Constitution, if there's a state statute or a charter that says something else, the Constitution governs. And the best example of that was the Headley Amendment back in 1979, proposal laid back in 1994, really changed municipal finance and taxation, that then required a change to all the state laws. Underneath the Constitution, we have laws enacted by the legislature, like the Home Rural Cities Act. The state creates cities, the state gives you your powers, the state can limit your powers. And so the state can pass laws to change the previous rules, and they can do that without you having to go and amend your charters. Below state law, the city is governed by its city charter, which may provide additional limitations, however, the state law can override that. So very often, sometimes you may ask the city attorney for an opinion on something because the charter has this language, and the response may be, state law has changed that changes that. So even though the charter language says X, the state law says something else, and the state law will trump the charter. And then below the charter, then you have your various ordinances and policies and things like that. So again, the legal debt limits are going to be governed by the state law first, regardless of something else that you may have in your charter. And there's a good reason for these various exceptions from the debt line. Revenue bonds are exempt because, as we talked about earlier, revenue bonds aren't pledging the city's full faith and credit, they're payable from that enterprise fund over there, and there's a lot of old case law that talks about that. So the debt limit is there to protect the taxpayers from cities issuing too much debt payable from taxes. So revenue bonds are exempt because they're not payable from taxes. Special assessment bonds are generally payable from special assessments on specific properties that are benefited, and they might even be backed by the full faith and credit, but they're not expected to be paid from that. So they are exempt from the 10% debt limit. The state allows cities to issue bonds payable from gas and weight taxes, called Michigan Transportation Fund bonds, those are exempt. Pollution abatement bonds, if you are required by state or federal law to make pollution abatement improvements, as was the case with your CSO projects, those bonds are exempt from state law, and in fact, from the debt limit under state law. And in fact, in the 90s, the city issued bonds that were not revenue bonds, but were actually general obligation bonds for some of the early CSO improvements, because that was a better vehicle at that time for the city. And those bonds, even though they are, in theory, payable from taxes to the city, in fact, the city uses its water and sewer revenues to pay it, and because they were there to comply with state and federal permit requirements, those are exempt from the debt limit under state law. In the 90s, just to clarify, there was another exemption put in for combined sewage overflow projects, which again, is a lot of the debt that you guys have that was issued in 97, 2010, and 2011 for water and sewer projects. The other major category is court or state-ordered bonds. So if you have, you know, a judgment, and you have to issue bonds to pay that judgment, you have to do it, and those bonds are exempt from the debt limit as well. So sometimes it may seem like the exceptions swallow the rule, but there's a specific reason for each of those exemptions from a debt limit. And even though your charter may not have that same list, it probably contains the list of what was in existence at the time the charter was approved. But the list that's in the state law will trump what the charter says, because the legislature can change the rules. Okay, I'm going to zip through the rest of this stuff pretty quickly, because I don't want to take up more time, which is already giving me the cutoffs in here. Real briefly, you guys don't see this, but whenever the city issues a bond issue, there's a lot of different players involved, and I put this up here just to show you with all the things that the city staff is dealing with. So you guys are the red box, the issuer, as the city. In every bond transaction, there's usually a purchaser, an underwriter or other bond purchaser, there's a financial advisor that works for the city, and bond counsel, which is me. And then underneath there, there's a lot of other parties that may or may not be involved that we all have to deal with as part of the process. You guys generally don't have to get involved with this, but you may hear about it, so you hear about things like rating agencies, bond insurers, you know, having to deal with auditors, all these things go into the process for the issuance of the bonds, most of which are things that don't have to come back to you guys, but a lot of the things that are authorized in those resolutions address dealing with these other parties in the transaction. What I do is, and the reason you need a bond lawyer, is the municipal marketplace wants a legal opinion from a lawyer that practices in the area of municipal finance, that issues a legal opinion at the time the bonds are issued that says they're valid, binding, and enforceable, and identifies what the security is, and also talks about the tax-exempt treatment on the bonds. The reason for bond counsel, I won't bore you with the history, but basically, it really comes down to a lot of bond faults in the 1800s and the 1930s, where maybe a city didn't follow all the rules, like, oops, we forgot to publish a notice, or oops, we forgot to handle election, and the courts ruled, city, if you didn't follow the right steps to issue bonds, like getting approval from your taxpayers, it's an invalid debt, and the bondholders are stuck. So what the bondholders did was, they said, you know what, we're going to have some lawyer that is not the city give us an opinion that says it's valid and binding, so we know that we can count on the city paying that debt. So really, the opinion that bond counsel gives in the transaction is addressed to you, but it's really relied on by the market to say, this is the security for the bonds, and the city did everything it needed to do, complied with all the steps it had to under state law in order to issue those bonds, and then along with that, assisting the state in working through that process. So I will generally prepare the basic bond documents. Very often, the city attorney is involved on things like some disclosure issues, or things that may involve city ordinances and things, and we work with the city attorney on some of those issues, because again, I don't do what he does. My role is much more specific and limited to dealing with, helping you navigate the bond market and all the federal and state law requirements that go along with that. There's really three different types of bond sales. Competitive bond sales are what we're going to use for the revenue bonds, that's where the bonds are offered for bid in financial periodical, and whoever gives you the lowest interest cost is who we award the bonds to. So we won't know until we sell the bonds in February who's buying them, and we won't know what the interest rate is until then. Negotiated bonds are bonds where you pick an underwriter in advance, and then they go out and sell the bonds to customers, and then come back and tell the city what the interest rate will be, and then a purchase contract is signed. That is a process that's used for most refunding bond issues, and it's sometimes used for very large bond issues or bonds which maybe have a different story to tell, maybe the credit's not as good and things. But in your case, it's most commonly been done for refunding bonds, because when the city issues refunding bonds to refinance prior debt, there's a lot more moving parts, and things need to be adjusted along the way, and a negotiated sale allows for those adjustments during that sale process, as opposed to just putting out for bid where you're more limited in your ability to change the terms. And then a third category, which is a variation on negotiated sales, is a private placement, where maybe you don't go through a sale to the bond market, but it's placed directly with a bank or a purchaser. And this is also the way bonds are sold, when you've gone through the programs that the state had in 2010 and 11 for drinking water and SRF, where it's a pre-arranged interest rate. So there's various types of bond sales that are used, and again, it's the job of the finance team to make a recommendation to the city as to which course of action to use. That's why in some deals, you may see notices of sale, and in other deals, we may be talking about underwriters, and so the processes in selling bonds are a little different. The other big factor of municipal bond ratings, I'm not going to really go over this in detail, but any bond issue over $1 million that is sold to the public markets is generally required to have a rating. The city has a credit rating of A+, which is in the investment grade, and actually, as I look at that, my line is in the wrong place. My chart is wrong. The city is in the top of the A category, and so if you look at S and P, triple A, there's only a couple of cities in the state that have a triple A rating, most cities in the state are in the double A or A category, and within there, they have a plus, no symbol or a minus, just like a school grade. And then triple B is still in the investment grade category, there are a lot of cities and governments in the triple B category. So A+ is a very good credit rating that allows the city to access the bond markets. It's hard to correlate that to a grade in school like A, B, or C, because really, anything that's in the top four categories is considered investment grade. Double B and below are considered non-investment grade, so when you think about places like the city of Detroit, Flint, Pontiac, those are some cities that have bonds that are non-investment grade, or you think about private companies, Ford, GM, for many years before and after the bankruptcy, we're in the non-investment grade category, which make it a lot harder to sell in bond markets. So A+ puts you, despite where that line is drawn, well above that investment grade line. And by the way, that's your general obligation rating, we may get a different rating on the revenue bonds because they have a credit sticker. I'm not going to go over these slides, but anytime we do bonds, one of the things that we talk a lot about with the city is the purpose of the bonds, and whether there's any issues that could cause a problem on the bonds being tax exempt to the holders. So I can summarize these rules that are on this page or the next in, you know, basically about six questions, which is, you're not allowed to borrow too much, you don't want to borrow too little, you don't want to borrow too early, you don't want to borrow too late. And it's okay to earn interest on those bond proceeds while you're holding them, but if you earn too much, you might have to send some of them back to the IRS. So part of my job in working with the city staff is to make sure we navigate those rules. People talk about arbitrage, rebate, if you heard those terms, those aren't bad words, but it's things that the city monitors to make sure that the city's in compliance with all the federal rules that go along with issuing bonds, tax exemption, that allow you to get that lower interest rate. The last point here is, because bonds have to be used for a public purpose when they're issued, if there's private use involved, then it gets a little trickier, and so we may have to jump through some extra hoops, or maybe sometimes we issue bonds on a taxable basis. Best example of this in your case was the Ramsdale Theater, where, as you know, that facility is used by a lot of entities, including 511(c)(3) entities like the theater and others, and so we're still able to issue those tax exempt, so we have to go through some extra hoops in order to do that. So if the city was going to rent out a bond finance building, like if you were going to sell the city hall, or rent out, you know, the entire first floor, we might have to do some things with those outstanding bonds in order to maintain that tax exemption. So I'm going to stop talking, hopefully I haven't exceeded my time, but I'd be happy to answer questions if you have about the presentation or about the revenue bonds that[1498.91] about the presentation or about the revenue bonds that the city's talking about issuing over the next month or so.
One of the questions that came up, when you talked about bond reserve and having excess in the bond reserve, what happens if you add the maturity of that bond to that reserve?
That's a great question. So a couple of things. One is that every time we do a new bond issue, we resize it. So sometimes as we go along with something, especially on refinancing where you're lowering your debt service, you actually reduce that bond reserve and that money is then used to pay down on the debt. So the answer is what happens at the end when all the bonds are paid off? That money is actually then used to make that last bond payment. So it stays with the system and that's why when you look on your audit, there's a category in there for reserved funds and that's very often what that is. And sometimes you may have other reserve funds like for a capital fund or some other things, but the bond reserve usually shows up there.
And the follow-up question I had to that, you talked a little bit about, and you asked some questions at the end that resonated back to the question I had. We talked about 3.5 million. What if we're developing a bond issuance and the project comes in well below what we initially issued for a bond issuance like the 3.5 that comes in at 2.00 million or 2.00 million? What's the downside to having overissued bonds or what's the upside and what are some of the ramifications behind that?
Yeah, so in terms of the sizing, we generally try to wait to issue and finalize until we have a pretty good idea on the numbers. Of course, there's always changes in things. So one thing about water and sewer revenue bonds, that notice of intent was written very broadly to describe the things that you're talking about doing with this project. But it also allows you to issue bonds for any extension improvement to the system. So you are allowed, let's say you had at the end of the project, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars stopped over. You would be able to use that for any other capital needs of the system over the next several years. So this bond issue is going to be sized for the immediate projects, but you have the ability to use that money for projects over the next several years and that would be the best course of those bonds. So we try to size it based on what we think those are going to be sometimes after bids. Sometimes we do bonds before bids are received, but ultimately, any excess would ideally be used for other costs and capital needs of the system. It's really easy to do that for water sewer bond. It becomes a little more problematic for a building because, you know, once you build a building, you may not have a lot of the costs. So we generally wait until after bids before sizing the bond issue for a building or improvement unless we knew there were other qualifying things that we could use to cover any excess.
And the converse to that, once we've issued a bond, you mentioned that we can't go back and increase the amount we're asking for within that bond structure. Let's say we issued at 2.00 million, but we find the project exceeding that, we can't go back and add to that bond issuance?
So in this case, let's say we issued at 2.00 million, but the project comes in over. Because that notice of intent was for 3.5 million, we could then go and issue additional money to cover it. Or sometimes it's, you know, maybe 10% or whatever and very often then at that point the city might use cash of the system or other funds to cover that cost over.
So the notice of intent is the flexibility we would need for variances in the project cost.
Exactly.
So it's critical to give us some flexibility in that notice of intent with that room to move within the project?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. That was very informative. I appreciate the time you took to explain that. Let's move on to a consideration of continued discussion and possible rescinding of deer herd call program. In accordance with council guidelines policy CP-10, section three, several council members have requested that the deer herd call program be placed before city council for continued discussion and possible decision. On October 21st, 2014, city council took action to authorize a deer herd call to reduce the number of nuisance deer in the city manatee by up to 50 deer. The call is scheduled to take place over the span of one month from January 5th through February 5th, 2015. City attorney George Saylor advises that a motion to rescind is a request to strike action previously approved by council. A motion to rescind or amend that is raised without previous notice requires a two-thirds vote in order to pass. If notice of the motion was given, either in an agenda or at a previous meeting, a majority vote is all that is required for passage. Is there a motion to take action to rescind the action?
I make a motion to council take action to rescind the action previously passed by city council on October 21st, 2014, authorizing a deer herd call program in the city of Manatee.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Mayor Prochance Smith, supported by Councilmember Zelinski, to take action to rescind the deer call. Is there any discussion of that? Any comments?
Formulate it. So if anybody has anything.
And just to clarify, if this motion were to pass, then we would be rescinding our previous action and no deer call would take place. Is that correct? Is that what we're voting on?
So this is a vote?
Yeah. A motion.
Yes.
Motion to rescind October 21st decision, right?
Correct.
That's a two-thirds.
It doesn't require the two-thirds because notice was given in the agenda of the...
One for one. Let's keep my vote the same right now. October 21st. Go ahead and for one deer call. My concerns are basically over safety and over ticks. Then historically on deer, here just before Christmas, my sister-in-law just threw a dog down for a lamb, Lyme disease. Basically getting those deer out there. Now also I had a friend here this fall that was bit by tick in the house and it began spawning and unfortunately, by the end of the night, it got pretty big and through the course of the week, it took him four tips in emergency room. And if I may, I got pictures of it. It looked pretty ugly. I mean, these things happen to people. This happened right here on H Street and they topped it out here within two weeks ago. Yeah, the deer comes through as wonderful. And this is it. He's claiming that tick was in the house, claiming he got bit in the house. You can see stuff on the side and all that. Where initially was that night, there was two days later and then for the rest of the week, you know, trips to emergency room. And here's the window, said the deer just went through here just before Christmas. I mean, and this is on H Street. So I mean, there is a problem here. We got a lot of deer and we do have ticks and they carry them. And for that reason, I'm seeing where, you know, I think we have to do something. I understand that maybe, you know, you can come up with any arguments. It's a pro and con argument. What should we do? Well, we agreed to do it for one year and see what happens. And that's what I'm sticking. I'm sticking to my guns in there.
My vote, I will keep mine over on October 21st, also approving the deer call. I spoke with a vet today and there were 16 reported cases of Lyme disease on domestic pets in 2014, 100% increase over 2013. Last week when I was in my office, I had three deer in the middle of the afternoon run through my yard. There had been car deer accidents on the north side, I think three, two bucks and a doe right by the north side bar within a couple of weeks. I see no reason to rescind the call. It is purely safety. I don't see any reason not to.
My concern is the overall plan and again, I'll stick with my original vote to not to have a deer call. The truth be told, I feel like although we have very qualified individuals out there performing that call, any hunter knows you could spend three weeks in the woods and not see a deer. We estimated the herds anywhere from 75 to could be 150 deer. If we spent 30 days out in the woods, we'd be lucky to take 20 deer. And that impact is minimal to what we're talking about. And if we don't create a plan that really addresses the issue, I don't believe we're going to solve the problems of the residents of this community, the tick problem, the deer accidents. It may, I wouldn't even say it would reduce much. Those deer are going to be replenished. So if we don't create a plan that addresses the long-term problem, one year of taking 20 deer out of the herd, I don't see as a solution. And that's my concern is if we don't create a plan that does reduce the herd over a period of time and continues to maintain that herd at a certain level, we're not going to do any good. I think we're throwing money away.
I agree with Mr. Dustin. I've done a lot of studying on this, but I know it's emotional on both sides. Some of the things that we're not doing that other areas have done and are still working is there's usually a complaint. They form committees or they have, they have people come in, they talk about it, they have public hearings, citizens are involved because it's an emotional issue. Biologists are called in, studies are done to make sure that we're doing the right thing. It's never a short term. It's always a long term. It's a year after year thing. We are surrounded by deer. If you shoot 10 today, in my opinion, there'll be 10 come in tomorrow. We live in northern Michigan. We call deer every year. I've been calling deer since I've been 14 when I bought my first 10000s. That's deer calling. We do it. Hunters called, or not hunters, but farmers call deer. They shoot them 30, 40 every year. It doesn't solve their problem. It minimizes their losses, but it doesn't solve their problem. I want to see, I would like to see a plan that addresses the issues, that takes a close look at how many deer we have, if we're going to maintain the deer, how many deer are we going to, how many deer are we going to maintain? Are we going to have 10 deer in the city? We're going to have five deer in the city? We're going to have 100 deer in the city? I have not seen a plan to address this issue. And I agree that we're going, we're just wasting our time and our money. We could go out and call deer and I believe it would have absolutely little or no effect on next, for next year right now. It would create a vacuum and that vacuum would just be a full of...
I'll tell you that, one of the things that I have a concern with and so does the city of Big Rapids, we don't have any ordinances or anything that dissuades or discourages or even prohibits feeding of the deer. And we continue to feed deer in the city and then surprise when they come in. Now I know residents that don't want to hear aren't feeding them intentionally, but there's a lot of residents that are. And, you know, don't be surprised when deer are in there because they're getting fed and they know where the food is. If we create a strategy, whether it's a long-term strategy, it should include some ordinances that says, hey, purposely feeding the deer in the city limits isn't a good idea. Let's keep them out. And if they'll, they'll stop going if there's no more food. So I think those are things that we got to look at and I agree, it shouldn't be a one year strategy. It should be a long-range strategy that makes more sense.
I think public health and safety are important issues. When we look at health, Lyme disease is certainly a consideration. My research has shown that there was one confirmed case from the Center for Disease Control in Madison County in 2014. One case.
Was that in the city manatee?
That was in the county.
There was one in the city too.
That's unfortunate, but deer calling in other areas have also pointed out that there are no appreciable decreases in the number of ticks because ticks don't just host on deer. When they don't have the deer, they host on other animals and in some instances in surveys, they've actually increased the tick population as they've reduced the deer population. That is an important consideration. So was the deer car accident aspect of the, I think our own chief of police has indicated that to him, he does not see the deer population as being a public safety issue. I see we impact public safety and if we just spent $80,000 to hire a new police officer because we can get more officers for public safety, now we're going to use those officers over a 30-day period of time deer hunting. It's going to take them off patrol and even in the paper today, Sergeant Bruce indicated that the officers would be reallocated back to their patrol duties from deer hunting if the call was ceased.
There are two officers that are going to be used in the deer call. It's not going to be the entire force, two. I guess what is, is a human life more important than a deer? Deer don't belong in the city.
Well, with all due respect, we live in the woods. We talk about camrak, a lumberjack camrak. They have habitat there. There's a big pine forest, deer live there. And I've seen the deer that the gentleman was referring about. There are deer walking around there. They have habitat. I'm not sure that we're going to target those deer. I'm not sure they have a reason to leave there because I think people are feeding them. I think they're going to stay in that area. If they're not going to go over to the area, we're going to call the deer. And that's one of the reasons why I think if we did the call, it would have very little impact. I think we need more information. If we're going to do it, we need, one of the things that I've read over and over again in my study this is, it says, do not start a call until there's a plan in place. I've read that in just about every study that I've read. You don't start it if you have a plan. I don't see the plan.
Are there any other comments?
Well, you know, I hear you guys all making a comment on the plan, but we were, I don't know if it was past spring or spring before, we had a biologist, where's Mr. Hornblower? Bobby? Or who was the guy that came up here and gave us the speech? He loved traveling city. He was a...
DNR?
DNR biologist.
DNR.
And he went through it and everybody was here. And at that time, we, I don't know how many on the council were, they went down and that was somewhat, you know, from the complaints that started before, so we did do some investigation and the plan was yes, once you get into it, yes, you got to keep going. And I don't know where the number of call 50 come from, but whatever. And what happened here this spring, I mean this fall, is that we decided to venture into this thing one year at a time to see what was going to happen. The plan was to try to reduce it, but also minimize impact, not get rid of them all. I don't think that's the total scheme of everything, but reduce it from funding deer cars and reducing the number of ticks. And yes, you're not going to reduce them all. Your point's right. You shoot 20 or 10, 10 more is going to come in unless you stop the feeding. If you stop the feeding, if there's no feed here, the deer will definitely go away and that's the problem you have. But until you solve that problem and you put your, you're still going to have the deer here. And so, I mean, the plan is somewhat, yeah, it's not a total plan for three or four years, but it was initiating a plan or letting the following council, you know, some of us may not be here, you know, to relook at this, reevaluate the safety, want to continue on calling the deer and to see what this plan will eliminate in this way. So it's just a one-year plan, yes, it's going to take four and one year to eradicate to a point, well, you want to pick a number, what do you want, five deer in the city or you want 100 deer in the city? Right now, what is it, 78, something like that they claim? Well, pick a number. I mean, and the number 50 came up to reduce it to 20. And yes, delighting, they're going to keep shooting 50 deer? No. They shoot about 20, 25 is probably what it's going to be, but it'll be a start and people see what the value of it, see that there's a reduction of somewhat of incidence. And if there isn't, either venture on it or you regroup and go on a different way.
I think it even goes beyond that. I think it goes to education when we come plan what deer don't like. An average deer will eat between 10 to 15 pounds of rinds a day, if I can believe what I've read.
I think that's a lot, but yeah.
That's a lot of tulips.
Yeah.
Again, I think that if you have 15 deer here in town and they're walking around, eventually they're going to give you your tulips. You know, because tulips are like candy to them. They really like that stuff. I just, yep. We haven't given a whole lot of serious consideration of what that plan is. We haven't identified what our goals are, what we plan to accomplish by doing this. Thank you.
I think, I think, you know, deer have a regenerative capacity. And the studies that I've looked at, if you don't know the numbers, if you don't call at least 40% of the population, the likelihood is that they will regenerate to the same number or an even greater number in the following year. Two deer, one buck and one doe can create a herd of 35 in a seven-year period of time. They have a remarkable ability to reproduce and replace themselves to expand to the food source. So I'm thinking, you know, if we don't have a really concrete plan and we need a maintenance plan behind it, we're not going to be effective.
Well, I think that's what we started to do, but I tell you, I disagree with one comment you made there. You say one buck, one doe, there's going to be 35 correct yet. You got to understand it from a hunting standpoint or from the way I've been, well, the way I've been told how the deer herd actually works, you get the buck and doe, okay, your doe's going to have two offspring. If it's a good winner, real mild and all that, both will make it. Historically, one yearling will die. So really that's what's happening, you know? So probably out of two, three, you know, two, three mummies and daddies, you know, a good third is lost due to elements, just starvation, because the stronger bucks or the stronger deers and the stronger yearlings get their food pile first and much. The weak ones are kicked off and dragged out and when the other deer drag off, they follow them and that's basically starvation for them, you know? So they generate quite that fast unless you're in the south where the winter time mild and stuff like that, but they do have a capability of, yes, of multiplying.
Some of the deer has their own form or form of deer call in your words there because weather, lack of food and other things will eliminate some of the deer herd itself.
Yes, I believe last year, I think we had a deer kill.
Say there was a significant reduction in deer from last winter. Can I ask you a question?
I'd like to share just a little article that I picked off the internet yesterday. Benzi, Antrim, Charroy, Grand Faber, Selina Long, up there where they grow all the cherries and all the nice fruit, just had some special rule passed for this. Yeah, I'm telling you this because of the difficulty it is to manage the herd. They have been receiving, I call them lock for nets, shoot the deer, just hundreds of them, just to try to manage the whole of their losses. Now that hasn't worked too well, so now they passed a different rule. Now, the farmers receive a special allowance for years under that management program, that permit program. This year, people getting permits also can hunt for certain periods outside the firearm and boar hunting season. In other words, they're going to be able to hunt prior to boar season with their rifle. The system allows firearm hunting through much of the fall, but excludes shooting deer October 1st through the 4th and November 10th through the 14th. The rest of the time, they're going to be able to hunt. This is their attempt to try to minimize their losses. This is their plan. If shooting deer solved the plan, these people wouldn't be having a problem. It takes more than just shooting the deer. Takes a good plan.
Is there any other comment?
Well, I believe the total that Chief Bachman gave us on October was 85 deer in the city.
I have the number for that.
That would be all right. Okay. So if we're going to call 50, that's more than 40% of the deer herd. Correct?
We got to permit to call up to 50, regardless of much less than that.
No, but the number is 50.
Well, we also have to take into consideration that the deer have changed now. This summer I had deer all over around my house. There were deer across the street. Now they moved out, they, what they eat has even changed. They're changing and eating twigs and little buds. This is just what I read. So they're moving. They're moving into the swampy areas. They're moving into different areas. They're herding up. That's why we see so many out in the Gulfport at times is because they're herding up into all these fishing herds. I don't think there's that many deer in town right now.
I beg to differ. If I see them coming through my yard on 10th Street at a clip and there's deer prints all over the yard, I don't think they're herding up and moving out in the swamps.
Yesterday at 12:30, my place phone call, this individual, which I've talked to before, they, they like 20 deer went through their yard. Not before. It's not me making...
It's not me making that statement. I mean, I'm making that statement, but that's the comment they gave me. So that's where I think, so that's, and there's no reason for me not to...
No, I get the bit.
Yeah. So...
I think everybody's probably pretty set in their thoughts on this subject unless somebody has some new information they'd like to bring forward. I know there was some concerns of why we're bringing this up again. We do have two new council members since the original vote is taken. And it's only fair that they have the opportunity to weigh in on that discussion and especially given the magnitude of what we're doing where the vote is allowing additional hunting and discharge of arms within the city. I think it's only right that the city council has an opportunity to voice their concern and vote on that. It would be my hope that in future years, that this type of discussion vote would wait until after the elections and so that the city council is impacted, whose voting on it is impacted by when the call would take place. So we don't have this issue again where people feel like this is talked about and brought up and brought up and brought up. Having said that, this is the first time that I recall that we've since I've been in council to do rescind. So I just want to make sure that people understand what their vote means. So a no vote would keep the deer call moving forward and a yes vote would rescind it, thereby ending any deer call. So is there any questions that what your vote may mean or not mean? Okay. Can you please take your role? Councilmember Gustin?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodstein?
No.
Councilmember Cody?
No.
Councilmember Lila?
No.
Mayor Protown Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Zalinski?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. As we move on to notices, communications and announcements, a regular part of each council meeting is report from a cooperating agency, organization or department. Tonight, we'll hear from Mr. Mike Terry who will report on the activities of the Ramsdale Theater.
It's my pleasure to give you an update on what's been going on at the Ramsdale this past year. And it's been a very, very busy year. And as that's coming up, I guess one of the things I want to emphasize, I'm going to go through this pretty quickly because there's a lot to cover, because it has been a very busy year. But the Ramsdale is about memorable and meaningful experiences. And that happens in a lot of different ways and that means a lot of different things to different people. You have community choir, there's a lot that goes on with that. People spend six weeks being very involved, intensely working with each other. We have artists putting themselves out in their expression out on the wall. We have people singing. We have people dancing. So there's a lot of, a lot of things that are going on. And so, before I get started, I just wanted to say that that's a really high quality life. We can offer community those kinds of opportunities to be on stage, to show off your artwork, to interact with each other, to have a public ceremony, bring all your friends to a wedding reception. So I just want to say that upfront, and that's the real purpose of a place like, like the Ramsdale. Not that it can't happen other places, but we have a historic facility like this that's been here since 1902. I mean, I think that's, that's a real powerful, powerful message that I want to get across. So board members, RGA, the Ramsdale Government Authority, consists of Ed Bradford, the treasurer, Joe Pedersen, he's from Benzie County Lead, Brian Gersky is from Manastee County, Joanne Yunus, the executive director of the Manastee Civic Players, Kerry Schubach is the president of the Manastee Art Institute, Jim Smith is Mayor Protown, who's just recently joined us, Tom Steady is a long, longtime businessman here in Manastee, and myself, I'm an ex-official member. We just, our meetings have been moved, we were meeting on first Friday at 9:30 in the morning, but because of conflicts, it seems to work better. We're going to try work, meeting on Wednesdays at 5:30, first Wednesday of each Monday, of each month at 5:30. This first meeting is kind of an important one. Usually officers are elected at the beginning of the fiscal year. That didn't happen this year, so we're going to have that happen, this meeting tomorrow night. So we're going to elect officers and board committees, so it's going to be a big meeting for us. Policies, board operations is put on by the Ramsdale Government Authority, that's our responsibility. Staffing is done by the city. Programming is done by our partners, the Manastee Civic Players, the Art Institute, our renters, local dance companies, and also the city can put some defense on. Custodians is handled by the city, administration by the city. And fundraising, Friends of the Ramsdale was an active 501(c)(3) at one time, but they haven't been real active in a long time. And so that's one of the groups that we want to bring, we want to bring back. Ramsdale staff, myself, the executive director, you guys hired me about 18 months ago. We have one part-time person takes care of the custodial. Site managers are kind of like on-call workers that we use once in a while to help us cover weddings and that sort of thing. We contract out technical help depending on our needs. And then we have just a few volunteers. We get a lot of help from the civic players who help us out with ushers and box office. So we're really interdependent. City staff, Ed Bradford, Heather from Vax Office, and Mark Hanson takes care of the building and maintenance for us. Our partners, as I mentioned, Manastee Civic Players, big part of what the Ramsdale is. They've been here since, I believe, 1939. They have a lot of different programs going on. Manastee Art Institute, 10, 12 exhibits per year. Ingrid Bond, School of Dance, she's been here for a long time, has classes, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Annette puts on music classes, dance classes. Chamber of Commerce, every year we have the Festival of Trees. And also the Manastee Community Choir is out of regular, year after year, they've been at the Ramsdale. Just real quickly, the Civic Players put on six productions this past year. They have about 200 to 300, 250 to 300 volunteers. And that's, that's a lot of involvement. That's a lot of community involvement. They had gross ticket sales of $110,000. That's up 20%, so it's been a really great year. They also contributed $1,500 to restoration fund. So they're a very big part of the Ramsdale. Manastee Art Institute, they had 10 exhibits this past year. They had a national-known artist, Nathan Green, come and do an exhibit and use some classes in watercolor. So a lot going on there. As mentioned, Ingrid Bond and Annette put on dance classes, two, three classes, two, three times a week. Rentals, these are people who rent the facility out. We had 17 rentals through the ballroom. I think about 14 or 50 of them were weddings. Some of the weddings happened in the theater. One of the residents from the theater was a Benzie Community Choir and also conservatory dance used the theater, that's a rental. Hardy Hall rentals are down. I think part of that is because the Art Institute uses the Hardy Hall so much, there's not a lot of opportunity. Also, some of the money that used to be booked to Hardy Hall for the classes has been moved to another category. So it's really not down as much as it looks. Oh, sorry, can you see Jay? Ramsdale Presents, that's the in-house presenter presenting that we do. That's something that I booked. We did 13 events this past year, and I think that's about the limit, given everything else that's going on. We might be able to do a couple more, but I think about 13 events in a year is going to be about it. We had attendance of 23, 19, so 130% over previous year. That ticket revenues were up 150%. Gross income, 23, 39. Some of the events that we did, did really well, $4,000 or $5,000. Some of them we did, didn't do so well. We lost a couple thousand dollars. Most of the events were kind of break even. One of the real big challenges with presenting there is we're not, we're not utilizing the capacity we have. For a lot of events, we're only selling, you know, 30, 40, 50 tickets. And we have to do a much better job of that. And part of it is just the different markets that are involved. We also, Ramsdale also does the Met Opera Live in HD series. Again, we have really small audiences here, but they are very dedicated. The same people come week after week after week. And we are, our gross income, we are making a little money. We did raise ticket prices on, so our total revenue's up and our attendance is down just a little bit. I think the attendance has to do a lot with the kinds of shows we're doing, too. We have the Merry Middle on 17th. I expect that we'll get lots of people. So we'll, well-known opera, we'll get lots of attendance through that. We do have an endowment fund with the Manastee County, Manastee County Community Foundation. Right now, it's about $60,000. We've had, what, 150 gifts since 2005, totally $48,000. And so that's for repairs. We have the renovation that was done 10 years ago. This is a fund that can be used to keep those renovations up to date. So if the paint starts peeling, we can use that money to repair the paint. Capital improvements, this last year, we did the green room, and you can see a little picture, big improvement over what it was. Some of the things that we're talking about, looking at, is the substage dressing room area. It needs some work. It's pretty bare. I don't know if you've ever been down there, but it's not, it's not, it's not the kind of place I want to take people, let's put it that way. And also the ticket office could be used in a renovation. It's a very small space. It's not, it's just not very easy to plan. So there's just a couple things that we're looking at. White paper, back in 2013, I guess the council, the RGA, made it permit to hire me. And it was approved for 2013, 14. And so you hired me, what, 18 months ago? And some of the things that you're going to monitor, that the RGA is monitoring, the strength and quality strategic partnerships, annual giving, fine giving, grants, Ramsdale identity level and quality program, and improvement in Ramsdale financing. So I'm going to go through each of them real quick. Here's our different partners. I mean, the Manastee Civic Players and the Art Institute, I mean, that's, that's an integral part of what the Ramsdale is. There's a lot going on. The dance halls, Ingrid Bond, we just did a, we co-produced the Nut Cropper, did real well on it. We made a, the city itself made, what, $4,800 and I don't know exactly what her profit was, but we sold about $12,000 worth of tickets. I think she did pretty well. She was pretty happy with it. We've been working with the Manastee County Foundation. And also we had a strategic planning committee that involved a lot of different people. Businesses, we did have one event, Jeff Daniels, that was sponsored by West Shore Bank. And that's a relationship that we hopefully continue going on in the future. And Chamber of Commerce, they do the Festival of Trees every year. Looking to connect more with educational institutions, we are co-sponsoring Glenn Miller with West Shore Community College that's coming up in March. And also we need to get more involved with the volunteer community. There's a lot that's going on with, with the civic players, want to engage those people in some of the other things that we do at the Ramsdale. And we've got to get more involved with some of the area philanthropists. I haven't gotten a hold of them real well yet, so that's something that we need to work on. Annual giving program, we updated, we had the list from the renovation, that's about 10 years old. My wife, Sue Terry, went through and updated and put it into a database. We've sent out three newsletters to them this past year trying to reconnect with them. We launched our first annual giving campaign in December, late November, December. So far, we've had 17 donations, 22, 50 today. What we need though, quite frankly, is we need an engaged board, a group of people that are connected to the community, that really care about the Ramsdale and have friends and family, you know, that care about it and have those connections. This is a 10-year-old list. I didn't expect much. We got some of it. Got something from it. That's an old list. We really need to reconnect with the community if we're going to do any meaningful fundraising. It takes a village, you know? It's going to take a group of people, a group of community leaders to come together that really care about the Ramsdale and work together to raise some money. Plan giving, that's another that we're being evaluated on. And I think this is a really telling pyramid. Plan giving, if you're going to have people are going to give you part of their estate, you have to have a long-term relationship with them. You just can't go out there and say, "Hey, you know, you're getting old, but I want your money." It's not going to work. That has to be an ongoing relationship, year after year after year. And that, like this pyramid indicates, that might be a 15, 20-year process. And so we haven't done any real fundraising in 10 years. So for plan giving, that's something that's, yes, it's something we need to work on and we need to build on, but that's going to take some time, quite honestly. Grants, like there's some grants this year. We did get a grant, $1,500 in support of the Glenn Miller Band. Just got a Michigan Touring Grant, it's only $240, but hey, you know, it all helps. Just missed on the project grant, the capital grant. One of the big, one of the big negatives in the response that I got from the committee because I followed up on, you know, how, how did we do, is that it looked like it was a one-person operation then, it was just Michael Terry doing all this stuff. So the next grant that I do for that, for that, I really need to have a community group, you know, do letters of support, lay out how the priority came. So there's, there's a lot of partner interdependence to get those MCA grants. And the kind of grant that we really need is an operational grant, that just kind of gives us money for the whole operation, not for any specific project. And in order to do that, you have to be a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. As a municipality, we can't apply for that grant. So that's, that's, that's one of the challenges we have, Brent, that we have to look at. Brand identity, we really work hard on this. We have a website, Facebook, I've been keeping that up all year long, and I do it for all the events, not just the city events. We've got weekly ads and a news advocate. We're doing My North Ticket Wire, Soup Bush, Facebook Boost. We're on the radio. We do press releases for, you know, for every event that we have. There's 25 different outlets. And then there's a lot of free calendars out there that, 15 takes, takes me about half day to make sure I get, get to all of them. So there's, there's a lot going on. And kind of the phrase, the brand is at the Ramsdale. So, you know, the Ramsdale's kind of the destination. Level and quality of programming. I'm really happy with the kind of programming we've had. I think they're good productions. The comedy shows, all the things that we've had have been good. The audiences that came really enjoyed it. Did we have the audiences that I had hoped for? Not for all of them. Some of them we did, like for Jeff Daniels, that was sold out with West Shore Bank. I mean, that was great. Did a lot with that. The Ingrid Bond, that was a great, great week. A lot of friends and family, a lot of people involved. We did well with it. I'm hoping the big band, Glenn Miller, is a sellout. That's what we're working for. So total, so all the programming between the Met Opera and the live series that we're doing, that's 24 events. I can't see us doing any more than that, quite frankly, with the schedule and the calendar and the different things that are going on, maybe a few. I think we can do better as capacity, instead of selling 70, 80 tickets for every event, that we can raise that number over time as we get known for putting on quality events. I'm going to save my next comment for another slide. So Ramsdale finances. I know this is, this is kind of the focus of the Ramsdale lately because we're heavily supported by the city. $121,000, this was for fiscal year 2013, 14. You have the debt service. I did put on here the estimated value, facilities, value of facilities provided to partners, the Civic Players and the Art Institute. Because without the city's support, these groups are not going to be able to stay at the Ramsdale. Do I expect the Civic Players to be able to pay rent of $65,000? They would really have to change what they're doing and how they're doing things to be able to do that. So there's going to have to be support from some, either from the city, from foundation, from fundraising in order, for groups like the Civic Players and the Art Institute to use the Ramsdale. Now, our renters, we're charging them full rate. So they're pretty much, if I could get enough renters on that kind of model, we might be able to do it. But we need a lot more business than we have if that's going to happen. We did some strategic planning this year with a planning by leading coming groups, Captain Guy, Lynn Craft. We had 25 participants from the community. We did, they did some pre-workshop interviews. We had a two-site on, two-day onsite meeting. We went over mission, values, trends, swat analysis, and we came up first with some goals. One of the goals is to reduce the city's operational contributions to the Ramsdale by 33% by 2017, 18. Create and nurture strategic partnerships sufficient to achieve our vision. Market the Ramsdale, help drive the region's culture and economic future. Action steps. First one was to invite planning workshop participants to restructuring Ramsdale partnership work. One of the things that was identified as one of the great weaknesses and opportunities in that strategic planning workshop was governance. The people involved did feel that we had the right structure to take advantage of the opportunities that are out there to build the kind of relationships. You know, like for fundraising, right now you have three different people, three different major groups from the Ramsdale that represent the Ramsdale asking for money. Might there be a better way that we could work together and have one stories, you know? Don't know. That's some of the things we're talking about. Also, you know, in marketing and all the different things we do, is, is there a way we could put out like one brand, one image, so we don't have all these different things going out at one time? That's another thing that the, the group talks about. As far as action taken after the fact, we've had four follow-up meetings with the planning group. There was consensus among the people participating in those follow-up meetings that the best model going forward was a separate community-based 501(c)(3). But when we got down to, okay, how are we going to do that, there was really no consensus on how to best do that, we kind of got stuck, quite honestly. There was a lot of talk, going different ways, and I think, I'm not sure that we had the right people in the room, I mean, we needed those people in the room, but I think we needed other people that could work at a higher level and look at the big picture and that are still connected, and I don't know that that's out there, that's something that we really have to, to look at and think at, think about. And some of the people that are starting to get involved too, realize that, well, we can go through all this work and do all this action, but we have no authority. We have, we have no, we have no real skin in the game. We didn't say do this, do that, but it's, it's not really up to us. And the other thing that came up is, we're starting to look, okay, who do we need to be involved in this process, is what kind of skills, you know, should our board members have, should this group have? Well, that kind of depends on the business model, kind of, you know, what you're going to do. If you're going to really pursue, you know, making the Ramsdale a commercial enterprise, really focusing on renting, that's really the set, needed a separate set of skills than maybe a board that's really focused on fundraising. And so, and what's really practical in this environment? I mean, as far as feasibility? And I guess that's where, you know, kind of where do we go from here? The realities of the marketplace. For this industry, for performing arts industry, performing arts facilities, 5% net margin is pretty good. So, if we try and make up the support of $121,000, if we're going for half of that, that means we'd have to have revenues of $1.2 million in this community. I don't see that happening. I may be wrong, but I don't see that we're going to be able to put programs and generate $1.2 million. I was able to generate $2.8 million in Flynn at the wedding, but that's a community of, what, 400,000 or 500,000 people? And we were doing touring Broadway, we had a 2,000-seat theater. That's just not the reality, so that's something that we really need to look at. The other thing is fundraising. If we don't have city support, that money has to come from someplace. And in this community, is there the capacity to get $60,000, $70,000 year after year, ongoing? Is that here? Also with the governance, we have challenges with the current model, because it's very few people, we have just a few people that are very connected to the Ramsdale. We need a much broader board that is community-based, that can tap into what the community has to offer. And that community, that community larger-based, they're going to have to, they're going to support things that are important to them. And so we have to look at, you know, what makes sense. A community-based 501(c)(3), I mean, I think that's the way we'd all like to go, but there's some real challenges to getting there, and that's something that we need to talk about. Another way to go is just making a Ramsdale City Department, and just becoming a property manager, and just saying, you know, this is the moment we have to go, this is what's going to possible to happen for the place. I don't think that would work for very long, but it's something, you know, to think about. So, as we were looking at this, it kind of came as like, okay, what really makes sense? If we're going to spend everybody's time and energy to try to make something happen, let's be realistic about it, you know? So we're talking about, we've got a request for proposal that we've been working with the Alliance for Economic Success and the Madison Council, excuse me, the Madison County Community Foundation, we're putting together an RFP to send out. We haven't figured out how to fund it yet, but what we want is proposals to analyze the market, what makes sense for this market? You know, what, what real kind of revenue is possible, what kind of real fundraising can be done in this community, given where we're at, where we're at now, and what's going on. Also, you know, a governance structure. You know, is the 501(c)(3), is that the best way to go? Is there enough support do we have, given the different entities that we have within the Ramsdale? Is that the best way to go, that happens overarching? Because the support is going to come from the core groups of these different groups. The Madison Civic Players, they have a lot of people involved, support for the Ramsdale is going to come from their inner circles. It's going to come from the inner circles of the Madison Art Institute. It's going to come from people who really like the touring groups that come through, and so you have to have those people at the core. At the same time, you have to have a big enough umbrella to gain the kind of resources that you're going to need to keep the place going. So it's been a really interesting year, there's a lot been going on, it's been very busy, there's still a lot of challenges. And I think it's going to take, it's going to take some decision-making. The Ramsdale last day opened without support, whether it's support from the city or support for Ramsdale, that's just my opinion. There's just, as far as earned revenue, kind of, we are not going to generate $1.2 million in revenues. I, I just don't see how that could happen. Now, maybe someone can come and show me how that works, but I just don't see it. So, that's, that's my presentation. Any questions?
I was kind of, I was really impressed with the amount of programming that you did have on the tights. Did you find that certain programming you got more attendance, whether it was a comedy, family?
Big names, Jeff Daniels, you know, friends and family, The Nutcracker, did really well. We did real well, we did pretty well with Three Men and a Tenor, we had about 200 people, again, that's pop, you know, very mainstream, and so booking going forward, I'm going to look more towards those sorts of things, you know, if we're just going to look at a commercial model. But even if I did, you know, Jeff Daniels, and if I did that 14 times, so let's say 10 times, for math, that's easier for me. We made $4,000 on that with corporate sponsor. That's only $40,000 a year, you know? And we're not going to be able to do Jeff Daniels, I think that's 10 times a year. You know, so even in the most successful events, if we were to do that on a regular basis, it's still not giving you enough.
I was impressed and I appreciate all the hard work that you're putting into this and trying to get programming, especially utilizing that beautiful building.
And we tried some different things, we tried comedy. Comedy at first really well, but then the next couple, we just had really small audiences. And I did a little research, I need a bar, you know? If people are going to come to a comedy show, they want a drink. And we just don't have enough traffic to, to put a bar in there.
I'm looking forward to the big band.
I have a question. The market study for RFP, are you looking at, I mean, there's two things that I've been thinking about in this respect. First of all, do we do a kind of a demographic breakdown on who is attending the, the events that we're showing there? And looking at what, you know, what kind of age groups are, what kind of, what kind of hits and misses are we having? And then the second follow-up question that, have we done, and I know there's statistics and data out there, who can be realistic about who, who can attend at the Ramsdale? That's probably kind of a tri-county area, maybe Mason County, Madison, Benzie, you know, maybe Cadillac, but mostly those three counties. But what's the demographic breakdown in those three counties? And from an age group and, and target perspective, what are they looking for? What are some of the entertainment things they're looking for? From my perspective, I've lived in Madison since the early 70s, and I've seen the Ramsdale be successful and going in some of its ups and downs, but I've seen kind of a consistent showing and entertainment that are there. And, and some of those demographics have changed over the years, and are we missing some opportunities by not featuring some other, other acts or entertainment? And again, I didn't, I wasn't involved with the strategic planning, I would have loved to have been, but I had court conflict, but I would have loved to have been involved and inject some of those ideas during that perspective, so.
Yeah, there's been a lot of work done by Tom Gert in, you know, breaking down the demographics of the area. I mean, it is an aging area. People that attend these kinds of events tend to be older, you know, well-think, well-educated. I mean, so we kind of know, they talked about it being a country market, so that's why I tried some country music. Think over real well, so I got to kind of look at that, and so I've been using that data to kind of drive some of the things that I've been booking. There's a, you know, there's a family element, so we tried to do some family shows, didn't do nearly as well on those as I hoped, and so maybe that's a matter of marketing. So we have been looking at that demographics, but those studies that they've done, they didn't break it down into, they said this is the demographic, but they didn't say, okay, you can expect this kind of money. Like what they did with the low feasibility study, you know, they said, hey, this is your marketplace, this is what you can expect to sell 400 tickets at X amount so many times a year. The study did, the studies that have been done haven't gone quite far enough and really get down to the, to the numbers, the nitty-gritty. And so that's the step that needed to happen, that hasn't happened, that we need to do. There's been a lot of studies done, we just didn't quite, you know, it's just like weddings, how many weddings can we expect to do? I mean, that's important to know.
Does this need to be an entirely different market study, or does this build upon the previous group's study and things of that nature? And do you have any ideas as to what you're looking at for costs associated with the market?
Yeah, this definitely builds on the studies that have already been done, because a lot of work has already been done. But it just hasn't gotten down to the brass tacks, you know? And so before, maybe I should have involved, I contacted a couple of consultants and told them what, you know, what we're after, what I thought we needed. One gave me a quote of $15,000, the one, the other one gave me a quote of $45,000. So there's a huge, there's a huge range there, you know? And, you know, I think this is something we could do internally, but I can't do anything else for a few months. I mean, I, this would be great fun to do, and I'd need some resources, you know, as far as access to databases and, and different things. I mean, this would be a great project, I'd love, I'd love to be involved in, you know, but I think we need the external expertise, because Mike Terry might come back and say something, I don't know, but the community, the people involved are going to be, even if I come up with the ratings. You know, so we need some external expertise.
Can you speak to the fact that the AES is trying to line up funding for this? So it's not going to happen unless there's a significant amount of funding.
Right, the AES is looking for funding, that's part of what we're doing. Talked with the Community Foundation about setting up a separate fundraising effort just to raise money for, for this fund. And I think it's really important to get some really hard numbers, some real realistic numbers. You know, how many in a market this size, and how many people can we expect to attend, you know, certain kinds of events? You know, and realistically, when you, when you buy a ticket at the Ramsdale, if you're in the lower floor, you're really happy, but I've noticed when the ticket sales get to the balcony, all of a sudden they fall off really fast. And some of you may know why, the seats are really tight up there. Most of us can't sit up there. We can't do it, the seats are too tight, and most people know that. So instead of a 462-seat house, maybe we really only have a 200-seat house or 240-seat house. And so what does that mean as far as the finances go? And some of the, there's a lot of competition in this area too, you know? People like Jeff Daniels, we can go that way, they're expensive, but that puts us head-to-head with the casino, and that has implications, implications as well. So we really have, there's a lot of different, when you look at the marketplace, you not only have to look at what you can do, but what else is being done out there.
Have you worked with the casino or talked with them on their events compared to what we have here in the city, something like the DDA is working with my?
I talked to Glenn Zerian a little bit when I first got here. We talked, we haven't gotten to the point, I don't know, I've been in a couple meetings with people from, from the casino, I mean, they book events to attract people there to, to gamble. They're not looking to make money, I'm sure we'd like to make money on it if they could, but they make a lot more money on gambling, you know, so that's kind of a loss leader for them. And they have a, an ongoing, I don't know if it would be in their interest or if they'd have any benefits to, to sharing with those people, like maybe after they did the casino, they could come to the Ramsdale? I just don't know how that would work. But we haven't had that discussion.
Could be an avenue to go down?
Yeah, it might be.
Excellent.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Next, move on to concerns and comments. Citizen comment, this is an opportunity for citizen comment and municipal services. Activities or areas of city involvement, citizens' attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments, which are limited five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. So anyone who'd like to comment?
Yes, it did surprise Bob Hornco, 432(c)(3). Didn't surprise me on the vote tonight. But now the challenge is for every one of you council members to come up with a plan to cull the deer herd. And also, just before I got off the council, I recommended that we look at an ordinance on deer feeding. So my challenge to you is, let's come up with a plan quick. I know this year is out of it already, but let's come up with a plan and let's move on, because last year we had a harsh, harsh winter, and I had five sets of fawns in my yard in the spring. What's going to happen this spring when the deer, the fawns start dropping? We're going to have more. So let's, let's start looking at a plan, if this is what you want, and let's move forward. Thank you.
Jeremy Novak, 33, Leaven Street. What was the, was there a cost to the taxpayer to do the deer cull?
I don't believe there.
Was there any, do you want to?
We haven't, we haven't diamond it yet.
Would there be cost once it's done?
No, it's dollars. We had done it, we had created $11,000, we had used overtime, we were just paying about $300 for bait and all that kind of stuff.
Okay, thank you. I guess, you know, I'm with Mr. Hornco on this, I feel like that was kind of a, I don't know, anyways, it's done. I do have a couple of quick questions though. I wasn't here for a couple of meetings, so I apologize. The Von debt that we're talking about, the three and a half million, what is that for? No sewer and water, has that project already been anticipated?
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm not going to go over all the details.
Okay, then, yeah, I just.
There's various projects.
There's multiple.
It's a dozen. Dozens of different projects.
Dozens of different.
Okay. And are those mandated projects by the state or by the government? Are just done or already done?
Partial of them are mandated, some are not. Please go over the whole, that's our good care.
Yeah, that's fine, I can always stop it, I just had a couple of questions. And then as far as the Ramsdale Theater, I heard a rumor that the Art Institute was moving out or moved out, or is going to move out? Have you ever heard that, just a rumor? Are you still here?
I am.
Okay. All right, all right, thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to comment? So now we'll move on to official steps. Nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing, Your Honor.
City Attorney?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Public Safety Director?
Nothing, Your Honor.
DPW Director?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Finance Director?
Nothing, Your Honor.
City Engineer?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Councilmember vote?
I know that DPW was on a water main break, and I know it's called, I thought they did a good job. It took a little time, and then they also broke a valve doing it, but that, all those valves are open, that's going to happen. I didn't miss calling out with you guys either, and don't call me. I'll say that, no, Happy New Year, everybody, I wish the best for everybody, good year with everything. Okay, that's it.
Councilmember Zonski?
Yes, I was on those, both those water breaks. I have a new appreciation for every time I turn my water on and flush my toilet. I appreciate what they do, they work hard, in some real, real tough conditions. The second thing, I don't know how to, how to get this started, but I agree with Mr. Hornco and the other people who have concerns, how do we start a process? Keep us moving forward, just here, hold on, what do we do to start? I don't know what, how do we start it? How do we start a process to come up with a plan?
You need to think about that a little bit.
Okay.
Probably start somewhere with a work session and hash out some plans.
I would like to see it started as soon, as soon as possible, to be come up with a plan that addresses those issues. Because they are issues, they are, they are concerns, and we need to do that. Thank you.
Yes, I would like to also thank the Public Works of the Water Department. New Year's Day was a prime day with weather, and people dug a hole 10 and 1/2 feet deep to get to a pipe, and they continued to have difficulties as the water collapsed things around them, but they did a really great job. My appreciation to them for that. Also, I'd like to remind everybody, it's a run water notice again, 1st of January. Is that going to be publicized? Haven't seen it in the paper. Jeff?
The city maintains a list of properties within, properties and customers that have services that are susceptible to freezing. Each year, we put notices out to each of those addresses, we put a flyer on their door. And this year, we actually put some more information on that flyer. So that's the process we've used every year, and then the spring, we give them notice again to then stop. So this is different than what occurred last winter, when we did a citywide run water. So if you, and we only added maybe a half a dozen to the list based on information that we found last year, and very specific issues such as a main that has a broken valve in the opposition, thereby creating a dead end. We felt that those were more susceptible, and so those were added to the list. So everybody was notified with those door hangers last week. And in anticipation of that, most of the people on that list have already, have been calling for weeks, wondering when we were going to issue that notice. Again, we've been monitoring the, the temperatures in the ground level, and felt that we could very safely wait until the first of the, of a month to issue that notice.
Thanks, Jeremy. Jeff, how are we with that ground temperature compared to this year compared to last year?
I haven't compared it to last year, except that, just from memory, a week ago, I'm sorry, a year ago next week, we would've had 30 freeze-ups. So going back, going back from memory, I guess, the frost was probably over four feet down by then. I just checked it yesterday, and the probe that's out by 31 and 28th Street shows that the ground temperature down to about 25 inches, 26 inches deep is at 32 degrees. That doesn't necessarily mean the frost is that deep, but it's cold down to two and a half feet now.
Okay. Thank you.
Jeff, would you could, the lack of snow, do you anticipate that, that frost now with the cold weather starting to go quicker with the absence of the insulation of the snow ? That's a Sean question.
Yeah, the, the snow actually adds a lot of insulating value to the ground and buffers how that cold, the cold temperatures react to the soils. But there's also a lot of factors, like how much moisture's in the ground and how it goes down. So as Mr. Cody has mentioned in the past, we've never had frost that deep and had the water system in jeopardy like we did last year, so, but we'll continue to monitor it on a daily basis, and if we feel we're getting into a dangerous zone, then we'll be proactive again.
Do we have that new piece of equipment ready to go that we had purchased last year to assist with the thawing of water lines?
Yep, we purchased.
I have my faceplate.
We purchased a jet de-icer, which is essentially a heat tank, it's a commercial heat tank, heat water, heat tank, and it also has a hose reel line. And so we're able to hook on, extract the meter, hook onto the fittings of the water service, and then put a jet nozzle up through the, through the service, and that water gets heated and recirculated. We have not been able to use it, which I'm happy for, and anticipate that the first five to 10 that we need to do or where we can help people out, that we'll kind of do that as a training, there'll be no charge for that. If you're on the freeze-up list and you freeze, then you are responsible for thawing that service and everything that's associated with it. So there would be a cost using that in the future. If you're not on the freeze-up list and you freeze, then certainly it will help you out, and there's a cost for that. But we haven't, haven't had an opportunity to use it yet.
But it's ready to go.
It's ready to go.
I got a couple of things. Again, water break, kudos, you guys. That was cold, cold weather out there. Second thing, ice rink, nice job. I'm glad we got some of it being used. Do we anticipate the rest of that being by the end of the week, or we got enough cold weather for it, so?
Yeah, it's interesting. We, I kept some guys out there later today. We're trying to, the southeast corner of that, of the rink is the highest point of the rink. So we've got ice on, 90% of it is that corner that still has the liner exposed. So today, we were layering with a fire hose, layering water, waiting a half, you know, it takes about a half hour to get a quarter inch to freeze, and then continue layering it. We actually created a, put some snow in that corner, slushed it in last, or just before the meeting started tonight. And so with the, with the, with how cold it is, you can only put a certain amount of water down before it freezes, and it kind of creates a ripple, so it doesn't create a real smooth surface. But we're gonna continue building it up throughout this week. I would say after 5, 6 o'clock in the evenings, it'd be available for use through this week even. The areas that are unsafe for the liner and stuff, we've put cones and a rope out just to keep people away from that, from damaging it. And then next week, the temperature's supposed to come up a little bit, so when it's in the twenties, we'll be able to actually put more water on it and start leveling it off. And then we also have our resurfacing tool that we'll, we'll start using once we get a little further along to smooth it out.